Let's get started. Good afternoon. It's October 30, 2024. Time is a little past 4:00 p.m. Board Director is in attendance. Director Art, Director Jorgensen, Director Bankus, Director Haley, Nelson, Carey, and all of them. All seven board members are in attendance in person. We are at the work session and the first item on the agenda is Palmer High School renovation, the community engagement update. We have several of our external partners at the table today. So I invite Doug Abernathy and Chris Lieber to join us from RTA Architects and from NEES. And then Dr. Jessica Weiss is also joining us. There was a town hall this past Monday at Palmer High School. It was very well attended. Several board members were present as well. Good engagement and feedback. Thank you for facilitating that. To discuss all that is what we have brought you to the table. But before I turn to you, I will turn to Superintendent Call.
I'm super excited for the team to be here. Monday was a hallmark event for us. A huge shout out for Dr. Jessica Weiss in really helping craft from the administrative position how it is that we partner in this space because I think we're really coming together and forward as a unified team. Krista Burke is not here this evening and I was just at Palmer. She was meeting with some parents, so I asked her to stay and take care of the school while we come here and communicate to the board the future of the school. So, and with that, I hand that over to Mr. Abernathy.
Thank you. Superintendent Call. So we're going to do a little bit of a recap, high level of the information that we've covered both Monday and Tuesday. So just a little bit of perspective. We're continuing discussions with the staff on a regular basis about once a month. And so we're actually right now engaged with staff Monday morning and talked about the educational program, which is really identifying all the spaces in the building that'll be necessary to deliver high quality instruction. And so we're meeting with them, meeting with them right now. This is our second meeting with them. We met with all the departments and got great feedback. That evening, we met with the community. We're going to recap that tonight. We also met with, we met with the staff in particular to review the information that you'll see here tonight and got their feedback yesterday after school. And then Chris and I and Jessica were just at the school and presented to about 80 students in the building and got feedback directly from students in that meeting. And so it's been, it's been a busy week, but we've gotten some really great feedback. As you all know, we're in this visioning and planning process, which is very important for the master planning process for the entire Palmer campus. What we're going to show you a little bit later here really represents that master planning concept. We hope to wrap that up here at the end of the year, the beginning of January. As you know, we, we have a hard deadline with the COPs that we've got to manage to. And so we've got to get into the next more technical phases of design, which is really schematic design, which is really flushing out this first phase. And then also design development, which is where we get really into the details of door locks and outlets and streetscape improvements and all those very detailed sort of things will start happening in the spring of this, this coming year. So master plan options and feedback, we've heard this a lot. So Chris and I are going to do this as a tag team tonight probably and talk about these master plan options. I don't think either one of us is eloquent as Omar was on Monday night, which is our partner from Perkins and Eastman that presented these, but we're going to get, we're going to do our best this afternoon with all of you. And so we really started by looking at the existing property that the district has, and that is the starting point for all discussions. The arc that you see on the screen is really about a five minute walk from any point on the campus. So if you look at the entryway at the front nine and you sort of walk for five minutes, you can get down to Herb's Field and you can get to the north edge of the property. And then of course, our relation to Acacia Park is very important in this process. As we, as we look specifically at the building, as you all are aware, is we've got a lot of things that have gone over time over the last 50 years on that campus. But the yellow building that you're, that you see there identified on the plan is really the 1939 building, which was the original building or not the original building, but actually the second version of the building on the site that really is the part that the community has voiced strong interest in, passion. And we've gotten a lot of feedback, Chris, on that, if you want to share a little bit as we move forward here.
Yeah, absolutely. So the concepts that, that we shared on Monday night and we'll share with you shortly really have been driven by what we've heard through the community engagement process. So whether it's, it's the bell and its inclusion, whether it's the 1938 building or some of those other aspects that are really culturally important, those you will see carried through all of, all of the various concepts. And I think one of the best ways to kind of think about what we're going to be presenting, the, the community was really helpful in helping to find some of the, what I'm going to call big building blocks, right? Those pieces that then there are choices about how they could potentially be located across, across the property. And so Monday night's effort was really about getting feedback on how do we assemble those, right? In a way that, that works really well, whether it be from an access perspective, from the heart of the school perspective, from an education perspective, all of those, those kinds of parts and pieces. But again, all of this really without the public engagement that we've done to date, we really wouldn't have, I think, these good alternatives to talk to you about tonight.
Right. Exactly. So concept one is the courtyard heart and is really building on a lot of the discussion that we've heard through this community interaction about the importance of the courtyard currently at Palmer. And both recognizes historical significance because of the bell there, but also continued feedback that we've gotten from both student and staff and community members on how we can even use that more effectively moving forward. And so this concept really builds on the courtyard as, as the center and the heart of the school. And so you see two different colors there. On the left side, you see a couple of trees and some landscaping, which is really denoting outdoor space. And what you see on the right there is something where it's enclosed. So that becomes a four season courtyard. So you can use it both in turn, in, in the winter and then both in the, in the spring and the summer when we have great weather. Until, until yesterday, yes, like an atrium, yesterday we would have been outside. Today we would probably be inside in that option. What you can also see in this concept is the 39 building in the south portion, south and southwest portion of the building is maintained. And the idea is that that building will be maintained and renovated and restored with some historical character that represents that building today and its past. And so there's been continued comment about that and how are we going to do that? We still want to honor that 1939 building as we move forward through this process. The thing that continues to come up or one of the items that continues to come up is there used to be a rooftop terrace on the third story of that building that was filled in at some point in its past. That's a, that's one of those key components of that historic building that would be great to bring back to that 1939 building. The other portions of the building that you sort of see here, the L-shaped portion of the building with the curve is really the new academic portion of the building that we would, that we would demo a portion of the existing building and then build back new three-story academic, 21st century academic space to support learning in this building. The heart of the school would really become that courtyard and also to the south of that in the existing auditorium where we were actually talking about some cafeteria functions potentially moving into that portion of the building. To the north of the site is the academics or is the athletics portion of the site. So the Herb's Field site, as we all know, down this, down the hill, that piece of property is actually large enough to accommodate Chassa regulations, athletic facilities, if that was a, the direction that we wanted to go. That's the only portion of land that the district has on these three parcels that's big enough to accommodate a full-size track, football field, soccer field, practice facilities. And then to the north, what that means is that Herb's Field, all the athletic PE functions, pool functions, all of those move to the north portion, north of Boulder. In this particular scheme and one of the, the questions that we asked to the community was really about different options for entry of the building. And so the curve of the building in that courtyard that you see on the north side is really to allow students to drop off and pick up to a curb along there for there to be a center access across Boulder Street. We slow traffic on Boulder and we really make the connection at mid-block to make that really a student and pedestrian focused crosswalk. We've heard feedback from both the community and even the staff members about some of the dangers with Boulder Street. And we're going to show you another option associated with that. The other components that are on the north side is tennis courts, of course. And because we're limited inside area, we're looking at some stacking, some of those things. So maybe parking would below, be below and we would put, we'd put tennis courts above. Again, we're trying to maximize our site area as we look at options for this particular site. This is really just an illustration and some more detail about what we've just explained, talked a little bit about Boulder Street and, and identified some more of the items. You can see the visual and performing arts sort of in the, in the northwest corner of the lower block and you can see how things arrange themselves. One of the questions that we got from the community is like, well, why does it matter where the, where the entry is? Well, the entry is directly tied to the administration area and where security occurs. And so the administration area is going to follow wherever the main door of this building is because we want passive supervision. We want good support for parents and visitors to the building. And so it drives some of those decisions on how the feedback occurs about this concept.
And I might add that, that those foundational building blocks are all accounted for in all three concepts. Again, it's just rearranging those. So a couple of things to note on this, and as you, as we go through the three concepts, one of the pieces that also moves, this idea of where's the heart of the school, you'll see that change. You'll also see the auditorium space, several different options on where that could be located. In this scenario, it's a, it's a renovation of the existing auditorium space, but you'll see a couple of other options show up. And then also some significant changes on how Boulder is treated and, and how the two, if you will, the north and the south blocks could potentially be connected.
Yep. Perfect. Thank you. So an interior perspective that Omar created that we presented on Monday night to think about that heart of that school of being a three-story volume with lots of glass and daylight, daylight into that space and then learning on display. And so how we would arrange the, the steam lab, how we would put other educational opportunities on display and this really, you would see the circulation of students and staff through this space in the building, in this concept, connected to the courtyard. So we'll move on to concept two. We have three concepts and this concept is called Connected Campus. And you'll see it right away that there's a little different approach here. And in this option, the Boulder right away is turned into a pedestrian only right away. In this scenario, we get a connected campus between the two blocks. This really gives the opportunity for us to create more of a collegiate environment and to let students flow back and forth between those buildings in an open quad-like environment. The north side of the site from an athletic standpoint is just a little bit different configuration. Again, testing ideas, is the pool on the east side of, of that block, that north block? Or is it on the west side of that block? You know, it's an eight lane competition pool. There's three gyms that we show there, locker rooms, wrestling rooms, support spaces that are all going to be part of that north block. We don't illustrate all of those things right now, but that will be part of the program and you'll ensure that all of those things will occur. There's a little more parking on this particular option. There's also an entry, if you look at sort of that northwest corner of the athletic portion, there's a, there's a little elbow in there, which would actually allow for community access, after hours access. It gives us the ability to sort of segregate that building and use that building for other community support activities during, you know, during the summertime or after school or before school, there's opportunities. On the southern block, this really returns the entry to the building to the front nine and you see that area being highlighted in the corner that the primary entry in this, in option two is still at the front nine. And we, we end up with an academic wing on the east side along Weber there that is roughly three stories tall in order to accommodate all of the educational needs on that side of the building. And then on the northwest corner of that southern block, you see that square and that really becomes the performing arts. In this particular option, we are actually proposing that the heart of the school would move into the existing auditorium. And so one of the reasons behind that is if the front door is on the front nine and we have basically a vestibule and an entryway to a, to an auditorium, if we reimagine that auditorium as space for students, we looked at the south wall of the existing auditorium and opened that up with glass and engaged Platt Street, we could actually create more of an urban edge. We could actually engage more of downtown if we re-envision that south elevation of, of the Palmer High School because it's a three-story brick wall right now because it's an auditorium. And so there's an opportunity to sort of reimagine that and really connect this portion of the site more closely to downtown if we, if we look at that option. Chris, anything else on this particular option?
One of the common questions we've been getting when we show concept two, can we just unilaterally go out and close Boulder? And the answer to that is that the city of Colorado Springs controls that right away. And so we're being very, very thoughtful about, we're not promising that this can happen, but what we want to do is really understand, is there interest in this option? And if there is, we're going to, we're going to document that and then we're going to go to the city and be able to sit down and really have those, those conversations and see really what's, what's possible. So I just want to be really clear about that.
Absolutely.
Can I add one thing, Doug?
Yes.
I think when we're talking about the heart of the schools, the difference between these two, just to highlight them for you, if the previous one had a courtyard and that superintendent has talked about this a lot, that visibility of learning that that could provide if that courtyard is open and bringing students in and letting them see what's going on in the classrooms. This model shifts that heart of the school to that big front entrance space, which we thought about as dining and library in a big open area that Principal Burke has talked about of a place that she hopes students have permission to get messy and think messy. But also that IB education really does center on the library. So how do you, even though it's 2024, what does a modern reconceptualization of a library as a heart of a school look like in an IB building? How does that then, if you face it towards Platt, help that IB model extend outwards into downtown? So students are, we're bringing that IB education inside and out of the school.
So inquiry is one of the words that they use a lot of times with the IB library and we want to, we want to make sure we celebrated that. And to Jess's point, the other opportunity by moving the heart of the school onto that corner is that it's on display. And one of the things that we continue to talk about is continued opportunities for partnerships downtown with businesses, with, with the city hall, with other governmental agencies. And those students being in that corner of that site makes them that much closer and gives them a connection both visually and also physically to the downtown environment. And so there's a real opportunity in that, thinking a little bit differently about that space. This is just the illustration of that with, again, we're, we're again looking back at that rooftop terrace as an opportunity in the historic building. You note the community entrance on the north side of the site for the main gym and the pool and an opportunity to really collaborate with other institutions, other partners in the, in the community. And we want to make sure that we're considering those options as we continue to move forward. These are again conceptual and so we want to continue to explore those opportunities to form those partnerships and bring them into this process to help define the solutions as we move forward. So this is a view from the courtyard looking across the bridge that connects the academic wing to the performing arts and a, and a visual of how that, how we could define that space, but also put that learning on display and connect it to the urban environment and make sure that we have a, still mindful of security and, and making sure that we can circulate within the building without having to go outside all the time, even though we have this great connection to Boulder Street. So concept three, we call Boulder Plaza. And the basis of it, it's, it's sort of interesting. So Cheyenne used to run through this site originally and connect it to the corner of Acacia Park. And the original 1800s building was actually on the southeast portion of the Palmer site. And through a fire, we lost that building. The 39 building was built. And this option where we're really, we're, we're sort of looking at a different alternative idea here. And so the entry of the building would still, the entry of the building would primarily be off of that northeast corner of the, the, the south, the south parcel. And so that, that plaza that we are creating is really acknowledging that and that extends through the courtyard and through the front nine. And we're going to make that gesture through the building. In this particular version, we end up with performing arts adjacent on the north, on the east side of the site here off of that plaza. And then we have a bridge that crosses across Boulder Street in this option and connects to the athletics on the north side of Boulder Street. And the academic wing becomes primarily that north, or that, excuse me, east-west bar on the north side of the site there. And we end up with a, a more defined and closed quad at this point because we've more completely surrounded it by a building, but left it open for circulation and for student activity in this option. In this option, much like what Jess described in the previous concept two, we are looking at the existing auditorium really becoming part of the heart of the school and the, and the commons and the library in this option. Other comments here on three?
This, this option also offers the opportunity for an additional practice field. This is located on the north end, end of the site. And that is done by kind of, if you will, consolidating other of the athletic facilities there on the south half of the north block. But this offers some additional flexibility.
Yep. Yep. Absolutely. Again, this one also has a community entrance on the northwest corner of the athletic portion of the building. You see the academic building on the north side of the south parcel. You see the, the bell is still prominently defined and then the note for the dining and the library and the heart of the school to move closer to Platt and Nevada on that side of the site. Concept sketch that Omar created that's looking sort of south at the, at the performing arts, the theater on the Weber side of the building, the bridge that crosses to our right that goes across Weber, goes across Boulder Street and connects to the athletics and a more defined courtyard internal to that where students could circulate in and out of the building. We've talked, we've talked, we, we mentioned Herb's Field at the beginning, but proof of concept as we've gone through this process is to look at that site. If we consolidate onto the north property, north of Boulder, all the athletics, then what, what options do we have? Well, this is just one of many options that could be considered, but it is proof of concept that we can get a regulation, Chassa, 400 meter track, a full-size football field, soccer pitch and have a multi-purpose field like a lot of the other, like what the district has completed at the other high schools across the district with having those facilities on site. This gives you the opportunity to consider that as a solution here. The two crescent shaped curved buildings on the west side of that site are really opportunities so that we can build in the other functional requirements like we have at Gary Berry where we have restrooms, concessions, team rooms, changing rooms. We've got to get out of lightning inevitably in some time in the spring and it gives us the ability to still do that along with bleachers and a little bit of parking on this site. And so that is the three. We have some additional information here, but anything, any questions before we move ahead?
Do you remember Omar's one promise when he presented on Monday night?
Well, I'm not sure I do. You're going to have to-
His one promise is that the final design is not going to be exactly like any of those. But so as people get either very excited or concerned, these are conceptual drawings of how we take the feedback of what we heard very clearly from our population over and over again, that academics matter and they want to make priority investment in academic space on how it is that we bring to Dr. Weiss's language, taking the IB program and turning it inside out within the core of our city. We're the only urban high school on the front range that is a standalone IB school. It is an advantage for us to think about the four walls being doors to the economy, the government, industry, community for our IB diploma students and/or our regular students at Palmer to be a part of that. So I really liked that idea of turning kind of the building inside out. And I think you see this, the other comment that Omar made, boy, it goes a long way when, when Omar says it as well, was, wouldn't it be great that if you weren't sure if you were at a high school or you were in some version of a higher ed campus?
Correct.
That idea of making a space that is a part of, for those of you that are in our new and emerging and continuing to grow downtown, it is a place where you can crisscross seven different ways and get to new opportunities, whether it's living, learning, or loving, or just laughing as well. I mean, more alliteration.
It's a good point, Superintendent Gall, because the, the idea behind presenting three schemes is to really incite that conversation and to start to tease out some, some key things that we think are important as a community, as a group. And it won't be the final solution as, as Superintendent Gall said, it would be a combination of what our priorities come out of this conversation in the process.
Okay. Before we proceed, questions?
So a constant comment that I heard the other night was the practice of people coming along Weber to, to drop their children off or to drop their friends. And so as we look at these with the idea that the, the community entrance or the, however you want to phrase it, with the in bad build, add offices, admin offices as well. How do we, how do we balance the, the old practice with the new? In that people are used to that and they have a plan for that. And then I'm, I'm never sure about where the parking is. I'm not sure where the parking is today, let alone in these plants. So can you go over parking a little bit more?
Yeah, there's two existing lots, as, as you know, on the east side of Weber Street that are existing lots that the district owned that we showed early on that are primarily parking. Cheyenne, the diagonal goes off the northeast corner is, is parking for students. And then there's parking around it. There's a certain amount of parking that is on that north, on that north parcel right now with the Ox Gym where it is. And there's more parking in a practice field there. Through this, we haven't done the full parking analysis. When we maximize the ability to use that northern parcel of land, that northern block, north of Boulder, we inevitably are probably ended up with a handful less parking spaces than we have right now. Right? And so that is, that is a constant conversation that we have downtown Colorado Springs, right? Is like, it, it's not like being on Briar Gate where you get to drive up to the front door and park in front of it. It is an urban environment and so parking is going to be different from that perspective. We're going to have to balance that to make sure we can accommodate as many as we can. But we don't have the land area or, or we, we could have the land area if we're willing to start investing in parking structures. We've talked a little bit about that in order to enable athletics, but we haven't had a deep conversation about getting into parking structure business.
And neither am I. So with the proliferation of urban apartments, underground parking is becoming more and more popular. So I only know that they, the maximum I know of is that it goes down two levels. Are we contemplating in any underground parking going further than, if we do that, going further than two levels?
No.
How much, how many parking spaces is it reasonable to expect? And I don't mean an exact number, but how many cars fit in an underground parking lot on piece of property that we're looking at?
It's a, it's a good question. We haven't explored that level of detail yet, but we will absolutely moving forward here as we, as we narrow in on a concept, we will absolutely have that conversation about what is, what is possible. We know we're going to have to do, we're going to have to be creative about some of those things on that north parcel of land to accommodate it. The, the, when we go back to the drop off pickup, those, those routines have been established and even we got this feedback yesterday because there's drop off that happens on Boulder. There was a staff member yesterday that said, well, I was hit by a car last year, but softly. But there are still incidents that go on. Right now Boulder is two lanes, both directions, plus parking on both sides. We, it's a big street right now. We have some acknowledgement from some early discussion with, with the city that that's not necessarily the way that Boulder has to stay forever. And there is opportunities to continue to have conversations. Where we strategically locate drop off and pickup, yet to be determined. It will be a factor that we have to consider.
If the voices get really loud about the practices that are going there, how much of an influence do you expect to, it will-
We, we, so the, when we did the presentation about a year and a half ago and we talked about safety and security in the district and one of the, where more students are hurt across America than any other place is in transportation. And so we're gonna have to be very mindful about the solution for transportation, no matter which solution is selected. So how we handle bus, or how we handle parent drop-off wherever it occurs on the site, or parent pickup, we, we're gonna have to deal with that no matter what.
And not to belabor the point, but I know that some of the folks who are graduates of Palmer who are deeply interested in this are very concerned that the orientation of the building with the clock facing the intersection in general Palmer remain the main, main focus of the building.
And none of these, none of these concepts changed that physical building at all on that corner. That historic corner, it stays the same even though function may change a little bit, but that historic corner stays the same.
So I'm thinking that the response would be when that comment comes up again, while you're changing, while you're changing the orientation. So the practice is already, the Palmer side is the main entry and exit. So it doesn't change anything about the orientation or the practice of people new to the school who come. And I guess that's part of the reason that the subject keeps coming up. Is that people new to Palmer or new to the district, they look at the clock tower, they think that's going to be the entrance. And then they have to wiggle their way around to wherever it is that they need to go.
That's correct, that's correct. And it'll be continued discussion that we have. The one thing that's great about a high school is every four years we get a new group of students. And we get a new group of parents that we get to train. And so if that parent drop-off changes in that process, then in four years, it'll be, it'll be the only drop-off and pickup that they've ever known.
I was thinking more about the alumni.
The, the, the hard part, and Sean, Sean is with us with Perkins and Eastman now. I think the difficult thing right now is that a lot of the students and a lot of the, during the morning and the staff in or off of a Weber, off of a Weber entry, that's rather underwhelming, that really doesn't do justice to that building right now. And we really want as a team to look at opportunities to sort of celebrate Palmer appropriately and make sure that the entry is in the right place for both students and staff, but also for the downtown urban environment.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other questions from board members?
Just a couple of notes, since you mentioned it, I immediately, when we talked about, you know, having limited space, said, let's remove Boulder there and open up that whole parcel. So option two or iteration thereof, I think is a great idea, especially if we can encroach on what used to be a three-lane, you know, road to bring some more buildings there, to offer more parking or, or whatever. So that's one thing I would be, notate that. I think that's a great idea for us to take over that space. I mean, CC did it in the past with their campuses, they expanded, so why can't we?
Sean made this point earlier today. It's like, it's not unprecedented for a street to be closed because there was one that Cheyenne was closed through the middle of the site.
Yeah.
Years ago, right? And so there, there is an opportunity there.
Yeah.
And then-
Go, go ahead.
Sorry. And the other thing that I think is, is helpful is with, you know, one of the initial concerns was, well, kids are still gonna be going off campus to do this, that, or the other, or have to walk down for athletics. And we solved a majority of those concerns with this, any of these concepts really. So that's a win in any, any of the concepts here, so.
It, it was a continued thing that we heard through the process with student meeting with students and staff. And even when we met with community members about how unique it is to have Palmer students in downtown on a daily basis interacting. Now, that's not always the best interaction, as we all know. But there is something very unique and very special about having that interaction like Superintendent Gall described, inside out with students downtown and Palmer. And it's one of the things that the students really appreciate. The last question today, when we were sitting with students today was, you're not, we're not giving up the closed, the open campus, are we? And of course not. That is not going to happen in this process. Other questions before we go on and we summarize a little bit of the feedback?
Yeah.
Does that bell work still? Can we get that bell functioning? UCCS rings their bell.
If you had a student, if you had a student in the room right now, they would tell you they'd ring it when they come in as a freshman and they ring it again after they graduate.
Yeah, but just-
And I, somebody on our team asked to ring the bell. Somebody on our team asked to ring the bell. And they were denied. Jen, Jennifer was denied in ringing the bell. She started a lull.
Just so for my understanding, you're just presenting these to us, you're not looking for any like, like I'll give you an example. And when you were talking about the concept of putting windows on that south wall for views of downtown, my thought was I would personally want views of mountains. We have such a beautiful front range, I speak. So I would want to see that in the design where the majority of students have access to those views somehow. And also recognizing, we have an open campus, so a cafeteria, majority of students aren't gonna be in our cafeteria. I don't know how many really go into the library. So just, I don't know how you get that. But my priority would be more about the mountains than a view of downtown.
Understood.
But I don't know if that's what you're looking for right now.
No, absolutely, absolutely. That's, that's what this week has really been about, is getting that specific feedback from community members, staff, and students even today. Because that will be part of the discussion that we have as a design team moving forward, so yeah.
And then I'll echo with the parking concern. You know, let's, let's figure out how we can still have people want to come to our school and not think about, ah, now I have to find parking. That's real when you go downtown. And, you know, if it's taking over Boulder and that becomes more parking somehow with a walking bridge, I don't know.
We paid for some safety reviews, I think two years ago, and one of the first cheapest options was at Palmer was to get a better drop-off and parking setup, of which we have not really gone after. But yes, there are concerns, but these aren't creating new concerns. We'll engineer the solutions. Right now, we actually have larger concerns than what you see when you look at this. And, and if you don't go to the school, you don't realize it, but there is no rhyme or reason to drop-off in the morning. And the later your child is, the more likely it is to be on a neighboring street of which your kid then just darts across the street to get there, which is a much even larger safety concern. So all these are meant to just get this kind of, do we think the heart of the school is what we want to drive towards? Is it connected campus?
Yes.
Is it this idea? I think that's kind of the conversation we would love the board to engage in right now. And I don't really think we need a thumbs up. Maybe we could even facilitate a little bit like we did the other night, which is and, and we don't have to do it now, but we can send board members those sheets for them to give feedback that we can collect.
Absolutely.
Because we're not trying to solve a problem here. We're trying to give an update of a process that will now get to this next iteration based upon the larger facilitation we conducted Monday night.
I have another question. Money, like when I look at these concepts, I imagine they're more than a hundred million we have available?
Absolutely.
That's just a wild guess. So I guess I wanted to level set expectations that this might be something that's done in stages. Am I assuming correctly?
That is correct. We, we talked about these as part of the request and the RFP and from Jen and the district was we do a master plan first as the initial part of this process. And so we're really master planning the entire property at this point. And then we're gonna carve out the first phase. And as Superintendent Gall has talked about, one of the themes that we continue to hear is academics first and dollars as close to students as possible, just like the board has continued to say over, over time. And so that is really our charge as a design team is to make sure that we, we make, we, we one, come up with this master plan concept, but two, then come up with a solution for the first phase that fits within that budget.
Yeah, I, I think that process is starting with the RFP process for that general contractor. So they would have a better idea about the price estimate that comes out through this.
That is correct.
And going back to what Superintendent Gall talked about Omar's promise that the final design is not going to be the same. In the feedback that we received on Monday, you will see clearly that when people were talking about they liked some things in concept, some things in concept two and concept three, so it was all like, and we can also look at it from the same perspective that it doesn't need to be one concept. You can pick the courtyard from concept one with the closing of the Boulder in concept two, things of that nature. So that, that's something that you are going to talk about now.
Yeah, absolutely.
Feedback from the community. And then closing Boulder Street, Chris, you may have to step into that space with the city to navigate that conversation because that's expending some political capital of that to get that happening.
So in the breakout sessions that Sean and, and Chris and I and the rest of our team helped facilitate, we, we asked some specific questions. So I don't know, Chris, do you want to start?
Yeah, I can kind of, and, and first let me begin by saying, the, the way that we approach this, we were very kind of strategic about asking, you know, specific questions that get to how best to organize the campus, right? The first question was about pedestrian access and this idea of, of kind of sense, sense of pride in that, and, and when, when arriving at the school. The other thing I want to point out is when it says eight votes or four votes, that represents tables of five to six folks or more. We asked, we asked folks, we gave them all three of these concepts and then said, dive into these questions and let us know which of the concepts you're gravitating for or towards with each one. So again, you can take those votes and multiply that. So they're, they're meaningful and they represent work that these teams did together. And so interestingly enough, concept two bubbled to the top when we talked about pedestrian access and this whole kind of sense of arrival. We also had a chance to test some of this with students today, and it's interesting how consistent the, the community and the, and, and the general public and the students were from, across these, these concepts. So if you want to go to the, the next, the next one, this one was all about which of the concepts, you know, best connects north and south. And remember, one of the concepts had a pedestrian walkway, another had a bridge, and then this is the, you know, potential closure of, of Boulder. And concept two obviously came out as having the most, the most interest. And again, this specifically represents the, the public, the community town hall. The next question was all about which concept best supports kind of this learning community and the needs of students. So we asked them to really think about kind of the, on the academics and the academic side. And what came out here was concept, concept number one. So you can begin to see how some of the placement of the educational buildings, right? May, that may be the best, you know, coming from concept one. And you can see then how we might borrow from the various, various concepts and put the, the pieces together. Right? This one was the question about athletics and parking. How do the proposed athletic facilities such as gyms and associated parking meet the school's needs? And in this particular case, we didn't get as much response. But there were more tables gravitating towards concept three. And again, we heard that loud and clear today when we, when we met with some of the students and, and tested these same, these same kinds of questions.
And we had the same comment yesterday, Sean, at lunchtime when we met with staff and athletics, right?
And it's particularly focused, you'll see this one has the outdoor practice field, you know, so I think that's particularly what drew people's attention to this aspect of the council.
Yep. The next agenda item is steering committee. Any questions about where we are in the process? Do we need to back up? Is there any additional questions based on the feedback?
I think what Superintendent Gall talked about that at some point in time in the future, if the board has an opportunity to do the same type of engagement like you did at that town hall with the three different concepts and board members providing some feedback on each one of the concepts and what they prefer. So you have that community feedback, staff, student feedback, along with the board's feedback as well.
Yeah, please just let us know when you'd like to do that and we'll, we'll make ourselves available. Chris, do you want to, do you want to start or do you want me to start on steering committee? Maybe I'll start just a little bit about steering committee. So we're really excited about engaging the steering committee in this process. And we went over the last month with, with Jessica, have, went through a process to sort of evaluate a steering committee to make sure that we have representative, representative voices from across the community that are engaged in this process as we move forward. And so that, that process took some time and I'll let Chris add some perspective on that also. But we're, I think we're ready to make some recommendations. But Chris, you want to start first?
Yeah, certainly. So you, you may have seen that we put out a call for, for applicants. And so through that process, we received a, a lengthy list of folks that were interested. And, and what I was, to be honest, what I was delighted to see, many of the, the applicants have been with us kind of step by step through the process. So that level of engagement, I think, will, will serve well as we move forward into the, kind of the steering committee role. But it was very important that we have students represented, we have parents represented, we have alumni. We have a representative from the downtown business community. And I'm leaving at least someone from the city of Colorado Springs will, will be joining us. I maybe lose, missing one other category. We felt a neighborhood representative, thank you. But that's all very important, right? Because those are the voices that we've been hearing from across, across the, the community. And we're really asking for these steering committee members to also kind of represent, if you will, those, those broader interests. And that steering committee will continue along really throughout that, that process. Will, the design process and will be really heavily engaged when it comes to the schematic design and, and design development. So we're really, you know, reaching out to the broader community, building blocks and getting their, their feedback. But as those design conversations become a little more specific, a little more specialized, having the steering committee to provide that framework and be able to meet on a regular basis, we think it will be very important. Continue to move, move the, the project.
So we gave where a list, if you want to read the list.
I don't have the, I, I will hit so many-
I have it from memory. I can do it.
Here, here we go.
So we have district representatives who will be leading the committee on behalf of the district. And that's Jennifer Hoteling and Hannah White on the capital programs team. They were appointed, not elected. Same with Krista Burke, principal of Palmer, of course, appointed, not elected. All the other members you see here applied. So for staff, we have Matt Wilson, the athletic director, and Sean Wybrandt, who's a career in technical education instructor at Palmer. We originally had two, but after reading all the applications, we came to three. So Connor Strange, who many of you have seen a lot lately, is the student body president. And then Chloe Komenowicz and Greta Kelly, who are both on the future Palmer committee as well. So we're looking forward to that partnership. Alumni, again, we also originally had one, but we had a hefty number of alumni applications. And so taking that into careful consideration, Judy Ausley, who's the president of the alumni association. And then Tom Hess was a new name to many of us, but someone whose application rang very strongly. Parents, we have two representatives, Jessica Barnett and Eric Popkin, both from different ends of the spectrum. One is a new Palmer parent and one has had several kids go through Palmer. So they're having those two different points of view. Our neighborhood representative is Ally Klein. Our local business, downtown business representative is Lisa Tserewitz, who owns a co-working space right around the corner from Palmer. City of Colorado Springs representative will be Ryan Tefer Teller, who is with the urban planning department in the city and was on our design RFP. So he's been a partner in this process already. And that's it. So we just wanted your approval for this list or answer any questions you had about the process just in the gesture of transparency and communication.
Any questions? Just curious, how many applicants would we get roughly?
About thirty.
I, I'm curious about how diverse it is in terms of my, any minorities? Or like, I don't, none of the names ring like they're Latino or anything. So I'm just curious.
We unfortunately did not get a lot of diversity reflected in the applications. So I don't, there is not an abundance of that represented here.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe go with who applied, so.
Yes, but you can also make a greater effort to reach people who are often harder to reach and don't know necessarily what's going on in the community because- And don't know what's necessarily what's going on in the community because of other historic issues. So, thank you.
Any other questions? Comments from the board. So the next step in the process. Are you guys have, planning on having more town hall meetings, um, anything of that nature? And that will be advertised with these three concepts and asking for more community input, um, or is it going to be?
I think, I think, I think the goal from our, from our discussions briefly over these three days is that. Much to Omar's comment that he made, that we'll probably come back with an evolution. Uh, a concept four that is an evolution of the feedback that we've gained this week and have more detailed discussions. I think we have not set a date yet for that next meeting because we, one, need to coordinate with with Jessica, but also with the school. And frankly, we weren't sure how this week was going to go. And, um, now that we've got some clarity. Um, in some opinions from the community, the staff and the students, and we can get more feedback from the board. Here in the near, in the near term, then that will help craft our next step. Fair, Sean?
Yeah, I think so. And, uh, yeah, we're also refining the program while we're doing this too. So that'll allow us to continue to evolve the concepts relative to the evolution of the space project.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. This is exciting. Um, just the conversations that took place even on Monday in those small groups. People sometimes are reluctant to let go of what they are attached to in the past. But then when you put these concepts in front of them, you can see the creative juices flowing out and all the conversations that took place in that. Uh, little groups and every table was, uh, uh, really, um, moving things forward. And which is what, uh, you are receiving as well. So thank you for all the work that you guys are doing. One of the feedback that I received is that there is an opportunity for you to answer questions out there in the town hall meeting. I forwarded that, uh, feedback.
Yes, yeah, and and I think just because of the time and the breadth of information that Sean and Omar and Chris covered. We probably didn't have as much time because we asked for a little additional time just to finish up.
Yeah.
The small group activity. So with that feedback, when we come back, we'll make sure that we have time for that Q and A. Um, that we continue to get and it, and even based on some of our communication. We want to continue to use the website if there are specific questions and themes that come out of feedback that we get through the email. Then we're we're prepared to provide more information through the FAQ that's on the website to make sure that we're addressing some of those comments. So please encourage that. If we don't get it one on one, which we're open to. If there is feedback through the website, we will make sure and address that on the web, on the, uh, FAQ.
Yeah, I'd like to underscore that. I I understand that in-person conversation is not the same as submitting something online. Everything submitted online is replied to within forty-eight hours. And it's logged that way for our team. Uh, that's why we use Let's Talk, because it helps me thematize what are the things people are consistently asking. So I can tell them this is what we need to respond to. So I, it's a both and. So yes, we should do more question and answers during the town halls and please don't hesitate. Public to send your questions via Let's Talk, because that actually really helps us refine our process.
Okay, thank you. Loud and clear. So thank you for providing this list. I think it was good with this at this time. So you can move forward with that and, uh, we look forward to the next steps in the process and hopefully we will, we will find a time to. For the board members to provide feedback on the three concepts. We'll get back on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all the, thank you for all of you being here. The next item on the agenda is the capacity committee report. Uh, I know the capacity committee has been putting in a lot of time and effort, uh, and, um. Over the last couple of months in providing this report, Dr. Comfort, uh, was, um, uh, hitting that committee. And, uh, several members of the committee, uh, including, uh, Chris is, uh, joining us at the table at this time. I know that, uh, Mr. Kaiser was also part of that committee when I first went to handle the work.
I mean, you want to come up? Sit at the big table? Come on forward. It'd be easier because I'm sure you'll want to give a comment.
Go ahead, Superintendent Gall.
Uh, I'm inviting Lyman up as well and I'm going to hand this over to Brandon. I just appreciate, uh, the team taking. A different look at a longstanding problem and trying to take the variables in the equation and solve them. Towards, uh, a brighter opportunity in future for the school district going forward. Brennan?
Good evening, board. Uh, thanks for welcoming, welcoming us. As the board knows, this is a yearly process dictated by policy. Uh, and regulation, JC, JCR. Um, I am trying to think about another process in our district that pulls as much data as the capacity report. Like what it seems on the website is like, oh, you do a simple calculation. You take the number of kids and the square footage and it spits out a number. And the the data you have in your, in your presentation is just literally the the bare bones of of everything that we review, right? We review everything from enrollment to performance to choice data, um, to square footage, to portables. To it is a really, really deep, comprehensive look. Um, and so the only way that happens is with a lot of people spending a lot of time. So I want to start by, um, thanking the, all of the members of the capacity committee who who dedicated a ton of time over. The fall to to bring to you tonight what we have. Um, as Superintendent Gall has stated, uh, this is now my second year on the committee. And I think I have a better understanding, uh, where we are. And we also simha- have some ideas and and feedback for the board on where we think we should go moving forward. Okay, so, oh, I just said this. Um, the board requires that the district define and maintain a district capacity model. Um, and so that's what we're, we're here to talk about. Uh, just some big picture numbers. This is our utilization. I'm going to use very specific vocabulary tonight, so I apologize if I bounce back and forth, but it's intentional. District utilization rates by level, so seventy-four percent in elementary, sixty percent in our middle, seventy-four percent in high school. I'm going to use this to highlight a challenge that we have, which is these percentages are very, very consistent with last year. Maybe they ticked up a little bit or went down a little bit. Now, while that might seem like, oh, that makes sense. Remember, we came to you last week and we said we are six hundred students down, right? And so what that means is while we've lost, uh, six hundred students in our traditional schools. Um, and our utilization rates are remaining very consistent. That's because we're giving more credits. We're, we're providing more opportunities where we're reducing the usability of a school. Based on, on what schools are are saying they need in their school, okay? So that's just something that that we'll talk about a few times tonight. Um, just a little further breakdown in terms of, uh, by area and also by level in area. As you can see, and there's no surprise here, we, uh, have our lowest utilization rates in our middle schools. Um, and again, these numbers are very consistent with, uh, last year. Even though we had some really strong swings in overall capacity in some of our schools. Based again on the credits they received or the information they submitted. Okay, key terminology. Lots of, lots of, uh, lots of terminology in the capacity model. I think that's something we can look to simplify in the future. So this is maximum capacity, basically the number of teaching stations. Um, and we have our ratios. Those ratios are consistent with board formula. Our building capacity, which is the product of teaching stations after building adjustments. So there's lots of these things, building adjustments, credits, uh, lots of opportunities to get away from. A basic calculation, which is again, how many students can a school hold, right? We're not really communicating in in that way. We have a recommendation around that. Program capacity, the product of the number of teaching stations after building adjustments and program adjustments. Right? So we we make adjustments that through the capacity model for a variety of reasons in a variety of ways. Some of our schools, it really makes a lot of sense and it really is accurate to that school and the number of students it can hold. And in all transparency, in some of our schools, it's not accurate at all. It's very accurate to how the school is being utilized. It's not accurate to how many, um, students a school can hold. Functional capacity. We started to talk about this last year a little bit because we were trying to get a little tighter on. Well, there's a difference in, uh, well, the architects just left, what an architect says a building can hold. And what functionally a school really can hold. Um, so we're trying to get a little closer. And so that's kind of what functional capacity is. And then again, we add in portables. We have, uh, portables at a variety of our schools across the district. Those portables are being utilized or not utilized in a variety of ways. Some of them have core classrooms, some of them have specials classrooms, some of them have preschools, some of them are storage, some of them are unusable. Uh, but they're still there. Um, we need a plan on, uh, the portable system in our district and we have a recommendation for that. And then ultimately the school utilization percentage, which is the school enrollment divided by the school's functional capacity. That's the number that we represent on that, uh, on this really big school building detail report that has a one pager for every school. Um, that's where, that's the number that is shown in that, in that graphic model. And then finally, a teaching station, um, because not all, not all spaces can be teaching stations. There has to be some basic requirements, basic size. And so rightfully, the the capacity team years ago said, hey. For it to be a real classroom, it has to be five hundred and forty square feet. It's got to be a a certain size. We can't count breakout rooms or, uh, oversized closets or those types of things as classrooms, right? It has to be a meaningful, um, size. Okay, before we get into recommendations. Um, uh, Mr. Kilroy, as you all heard, uh, last week, last week.
Last week.
Um, is now leading our enrollment, uh, in choice office. And, um, he is getting much more heavily involved in capacity work as he should. Um, and he had a really interesting observation before we even started the capacity committee. Uh, that proved to be very true. And so I I asked him to come to kind of share that observation. Because I think it will help frame some of our discussion regarding recommendations.
Yeah, uh, good evening, board. Um, so as as a director of enrollment, uh, the the position this year has changed a little bit. And so, uh, part of the initial phase of my job has been to spend, uh, an extraordinary amount of time actually in schools. And trying to get a sense of the, the flow of the school, um, how the kids are operating in the physical space. And so kind of in this process, uh, I'll go to a school like yesterday, I went to Odyssey for two hours. I was at Columbia today and get a tour of the building, go to the classrooms, just get a feel of how full does it feel? How purposeful is the building? How is the flow of the students? Um, early on, I went to two, two schools, uh, Steel and Midland. It just so happened they actually landed on the same day. Uh, and I do a little bit of research before I go. Uh, first one I went to was Midland, which is about thirty-five thousand square feet. Um, and has a capacity of a hundred and fifty. And so I didn't really think much about it until I was driving to the next school, uh, which is twenty-eight thousand square feet, which is Steel. It has a capacity of three hundred. And so as I was sort of touring the schools and I sort of learned this and I was reflecting on it. I I was struggling with the discrepancy, but I hadn't been part of the committee yet. So I didn't know, I wasn't super familiar with the model. But clearly to me, it was, it was a distinctly different, uh, algorithm almost, uh, determining these two schools. Yet the algorithm was the same. Um, and as as you walk through, you know, thirty-five thousand square feet. And you see a hundred and thirty-two kids, and then you go to a twenty-nine thousand or twenty-eight thousand square feet and you see two hundred and eighty-five kids. It's very different, but the utilization for both buildings is rated about the same. Uh, and so as kind of the year progressed and and I realized I was going to be part of the committee and learn how that process worked. I raised that issue, uh, early on during the capacity, but it was really striking to see the difference, uh, in these two buildings. Uh, who are really probably around ninety percent, I think that if I remember correctly, they're both Steel and Midland are in that ballpark. But their sizes are, there's a discrepancy in size and a discrepancy in capacity. So really trying to reconcile that, um, was a little difficult. So I brought that up as a, as a member of the committee. So that was sort of my initial experience.
Yeah, so we we just wanted to elevate that because it is again a frame a little bit for our, our conversation related to our recommendations. So we have a number of recommendations and I'm going to let Lyman jump in, um, when we start to share some of, some of these. Some of these are very practical and some of these are are more big picture. Um, and so, uh, first you'll see there are future centers. We have changed the footprint of some of our schools for future centers. And so this just cements, uh, in fact, that future centers are not classrooms and should not be counted as classrooms, right? Again, we're not trying to say that non-classroom spaces, um, should be classroom spaces. Uh, we're just trying to, we want to get to a place where classroom spaces are classroom spaces. So the first one, uh, is around future centers and making sure that they're not counted into into potential teachings, um, stations. Um, secondly, and I, they're a little out of order here. Then, uh, one of the strongest recommendations coming from the capacity committee is that we fulfill on our obligation to have a preschool in every single elementary school. Right? We are, I believe, thirty-one of thirty-three right now. And so the capacity committee, and I'm, uh, I would assume the superintendent agrees, feels that we need to fulfill on that in our two remaining schools. Um, in order to provide that universal option. And also, the second part of this recommendation, so we can treat preschool as a core part of the capacity model. Right now, it's an add-on or an adjustment to our credit, we use a lot of words. Um, but it is not considered core to the capacity model. Preschool is a core strategy to the district. It's the same thing as having a kindergarten classroom. And so we should, um, our recommendation, uh, is that we fulfill on that obligation to the remaining schools. And then we pull in preschool as a part of the overall capacity model. We're already doing that very practically when we think about assistant principals, when we think about, uh, staffing allocations. We take into account preschool now. We didn't used to do that because preschool was very hit or miss, right? Now it is almost, minus those two schools, universal. And so we want to to finalize those two things. Um, the third recommendation is part of what we've been talking about. Well, we do not want to interfere with how a principal is utilizing their building. We do think that the capacity report should report on an accurate capacity versus how that building is being utilized. Right? So in some of our schools, their their utilization and their capacity are very consistent. In some of our schools, and Chris just alluded to one of them, it is very different, right? Midland Elementary holds four hundred students. Now, it's not being utilized right now for four hundred students. It's being utilized for a hundred and forty students, a hundred and thirty students. And that school is utilizing that space as effectively as possible. We are not wanting to interfere with that. But we do think it's important to share with the community, that building can hold four hundred students. Um, and so we want to potentially add that as part of the report next year, that we, side by side, talk about utilization. But also talk about what capacity a building can actually hold, so that we're being as transparent as possible with our community. Okay? Continuing on, capacity report timeline, again, to get more accurate. We're, right now in policy, it's supposed to come, uh, the second official meeting in October. Um, we're asking that the board consider delaying that until the end of November, so that we are using more accurate enrollment data. Historically, the capacity report has been built on early September enrollment data. Because we get data and then it takes us a couple of weeks to put all of that together into this really comprehensive report. As we discussed last week in our enrollment update, the actual number in September and what we have in October can change significantly. And so we want to utilize the most accurate data possible. We want to utilize that early October count. In order to do that, we need to delay the reporting period, um, by about a month. That original date was established because the priority choice window used to open early, earlier. Now that window has, has shifted later in the, the fall semester. And so we will still have capacity reports out in plenty of time for, um, choice enrollment. Uh, and so that's a recommendation for, uh, from the committee. Um, next, portables. Last year, we said, uh, we recommended studying portables. We studied. Um, we, we know where they are. We actually want to to do something about our portable situation. And I think we would need board support on, are we going to have a comprehensive strategy about removing portables, moving portables? Making portables operable, whatever that means, but are we going after the portable issue, uh, across the district? Um, because it is, uh, it is, it varies school to school, how they're being utilized, if they're being utilized. Um, probably most importantly, we are recommending, uh, or we want to ask the board if we can go and evaluate the current capacity model. Um, Lyman can attest to this. Where the model was designed, what he will say eight-ish years ago. And where we are today are not the same place. Uh, and so we have become inconsistent over years with how we implement that. And so we want to go and actually do a deep review and figure out, do we go back to how this model was built seven or eight years ago? Do we need to develop a new model? Um, but we want to commit to the board that we come back next year. With a revised approach to building capacity. Part of that is also, the board has had conversations about a recapitalization campaign for the district. And so we think that capacity really should inform that. And so to inform that strategy. And so to inform that strategy in the future, whenever it comes, we need a model that is accurate and clearly depicts what's happening in the district. Colocation, this is a repeat from last year. Um the committee recommends that we continue to examine colocation opportunities. We've uh delivered on a few of those options across the district. Um and so we uh asked the board that we continue to consider those opportunities. Um while we don't have any pending like we did last year, we know that there might be potential partnerships in the future. Um and then finally, uh the watch list. So again, last year, we resurfaced that in board policy, there is supposed to be a watch list established as a part of the capacity model. Um and so we have some work to do now with schools that are in year two or potential new schools who are on year one. Uh and so we want to continue that work. I wanna turn it over to Lyman um for any thoughts he has, because we've, uh we've had some really great conversations about this uh over the past couple of weeks.
Then you get permission from the rest of the group.
Lyman? You have the permission of the board.
Uh I appreciate the opportunity because the challenge has been the last few years is we have been varying the capacity model because we had a, a pretty ro- robust difference of opinion within the group as to how that should be. I was involved in the development of JC and JCRJX1 and this whole concept with the idea of trying to have a, know where you're at when you're looking at where you're going. Uh and we, we tried to do a standard, a quality neighborhood school, for example, would have art, it would have music, it would have band, it would have PE. It would have maybe at that time at least a computer room. So there were basics that we wanted in every school. Then you would have program ads based on, for example, if you were a pathway school like Martinez, you needed extra things. Mitchell with ROTC, you can clearly see how that takes extra room. So that's how the whole thing was designed and it didn't vary a whole lot from year to year. Unless you made a decision as a board to put a new program in someplace or do something else. And also, the way it was designed was when you got up and bounced against that maximum capacity, it was a time to come to the board for decision-making with the superintendent and with the staff. Do I, do I grow the school? Do I add portables? Do I bust the kids someplace else? Do I stop permits? All of those kinds of things. What happened to us in the last three years, and people may disagree with me, is we got into a mode of saying, we're gonna loosen this up. And as Chris mentioned, it became, what does the principal think? Well, a principal, Brandon will tell you, you give him a hundred rooms and he'll figure out how to use them. But if you have another thousand students that need that hundred rooms, he's gonna have to make choices. Somewhere, and it should be at the board level, those decisions are gonna get made. So part of our problem, and if you keep watching this, I'll give you a real life example since you've given me the opportunity. Palmer, this time, requested an additional ten rooms. For, I think it's ten or eleven, I don't have it right in front of me, in order to use for extra space, not teaching, but for extra space. So they actually have twenty-four rooms set aside for doing other than teaching and they're teaching spaces. So you're in the process of building Palmer. Are you gonna give him twenty-four for other than? Or are you gonna say, hey, those twenty-four rooms that we built for academics, you're actually gonna use if you get the students? So that's the kind of place where this gets into meaningful issues. Uh and we wanted to, and I've been beating on Brandon about that, that there's a basic core and then you work off of that. Now, what we also are seeing, I think, is changes in demographics. For example, we didn't have in the original spaces for counselors or uh mental health types of it, uh situations. We had sped, we had the normal ELA, et cetera, GT. Another one that's come up recently, to me at least, was in middle schools in particular, but also in some of the others. We are actually using rooms to give the kids an ability to wash their clothes, dry their clothes, discreetly help homeless kids. So I'm saying, we have some things that we need to look at as, do we need to have spaces in our schools? We brought up the community colocation thing as an example. Palmer might be a place where you need some colocation, where you need some of these other kinds of things. That's the kind of thing we want to look at. The other thing, to go back to Chris's point, the five hundred and forty, if any of you remember, you probably do, uh came about was if we took North and we made it, the standard in the state is six hundred. North wouldn't be a school because there are hardly any six hundred square foot rooms in North. The five hundred and forty allowed us to keep that, that open. We really want, and where, where Doug will tell you is you need to be at eight hundred in an elementary. So Freedom and McCullough are very close to eight hundred square feet per teaching station. Our older schools are six hundred. So that's another issue that comes in there. But all of that can be looked at once you have all the data. And that's where we're trying to get to, is where we've looked at this, we've got some stability. And when we really get to crunch point, you can trust it and make decisions working with the teams that are important at the time.
It's uh, it's great to have all of Lyman's um context. Um that's, that's super in, informative for our group. I think uh we've been talking about this for a couple of years. It's time for us to do something about it, right? And I, I would draw um the, the Wausen campus as an example. Last year, we said that they had a hundred and eight percent capacity, right? If you remember, I was like, that doesn't feel right, because that's, might be how the building is being utilized. Obviously, there's not a hundred and eight percent of kids that Wausen can hold. This year, that's all the way down to thirty-three because of how, how, how it was implemented and because of the data that was submitted, right? When there's that type of swing, that means our model is, is broken. Um and so maybe it's as, maybe it's as simple as going back to what it was and getting back to being tight. Maybe it's redeveloping something, maybe it's a combination of both, but we know we need to do something about it um in order to inform our community accurately as we, as we vision forward. With that generally.
I'll just, I had the good fortune of stepping in about three weeks ago into a capacity committee meeting. And it was a really thoughtful conversation from multiple parties. We had current parents, past parents, staff members, building leaders, functional leaders like Mr. Kilroy. But I just really, really enjoyed the robustness of the conversation around this challenge, which is we need a number that informs the board and the community of what are the future things that we want to be able to do and not be using the number to steer away from the, you know, my Star Wars thing would be, these are not the droids you're looking for. Square footage, we have small schools, medium schools and large schools. What it, you, the community needs to know, if there's an opportunity for whatever that opportunity is, you can think colocation, whatever it is that you want, we need a quick way to be able to look at that. Because right now, we all navigate that list on our own personal knowledge. We look and we say, well, there's a high utilization at, in the nineties, but we know that there's tons of space available in that building. And so we're running our own calculus in our heads that the report doesn't reflect. And so we're asking the board to kind of recommission the committee that says, we need an accurate understanding of where there is undefined opportunity. It's not about closure, it's not about colocation of other schools. It could be about other community partners. It could be about new ideas like, you know, a five hundred foot tall kiln where you could be glazing, you know, pots for, for generations going forward. We just need to know where are the places we can think about that. Because right now, we only know that based upon our own individual personal knowledge. The report doesn't reflect it. Because the report says if you give the principal the chance, they will accurately spread out and fill the space.
Can I have a clarifying question?
Yeah.
When you are referencing two different schools having um different square footage, it's not necessarily the point you're making that one has a bigger gymnasium and that's why they have more square footage? That's not what you're saying, correct? You're saying how they're utilizing, they maybe have the same square footage for classrooms, but they're using it not in that way. Is that?
Yeah, I mean, uh sure, there might be a small difference in the cafeteria.
Yeah.
Cafeteria uh at Steel versus Midland. And Midland serves a different community, and so that principal is utilizing that space differently. And at the end of the day, there are comparatively sized footprints in classrooms where enrollment is nearly double.
Okay.
But the utilization report that we, that we publish, they're basically the same.
Yeah.
So if you're just reading that as a community member, you think Midland is full of kids.
Yeah.
You think they're full, right? Because we're gonna report eighty-nine percent. And you think Steel is full because we're gonna report ninety-one percent or ninety-two percent. Um and so again, that is how, that is how those schools are being utilized. But it doesn't mean, to Lyman's point, if all of a sudden seven hundred kids moved into the Midland area and all were going to Midland, we can fit two hundred and fifty more kids there um and still be within the, the size of the building.
Okay, thank you for that clarity.
Could I add to that?
Sure.
One reason why I, I have kept pressing all through my time on this is you get up to the point where you see that, that there's pain, you know, because of the. And that's the point where you need to have the board, the superintendent and his key staff really looking close. Here's an example. Jackson. Jackson was built for a certain number. It was overutilized. We added four rooms, which was another hundred kids. We didn't do anything to the cafeteria or the gym space or anything else. Then we added six portables on it, which gave us another hundred and fifty. Now, we're technically still within range, but we have overutilized the main structure of, of the building. So you have to look at all of those things and make sure that you haven't put a pain point someplace you never intended. Because what I have also seen, and I have watched this now for fifteen years, you overcapacity that and the parents will take care of it within two years. They will leave. Jackson has, and you'll see in here, one of the highest negative out of any of our schools because it's normally been overcapacity. And we, there are others, performance is the other big one is, you know, that, that means you're gonna have negative permits in and out. But, and Saban was the same thing. When we did the big change and we, we closed Irving and put everybody in Saban, the outside people said, oh, we've always been able to get two hundred more kids in. So we had overcapacity it by at least two hundred kids. Within two years, the parents took care of it. And we lost them all to forty-nine.
Okay, board. Lots, thanks for the feedback. Appreciate it. And the experience that you bring in the, all the years that you've served on this uh committee. A lot of great data in this, like what you said, like I think this is the most uh bringing together all this data. Um board, feedback at this point in time. And as far as the recommendation goes, we can come to that as well, uh what you have out there. Um any thoughts on the recommendations? Uh and the board can um um provide that feedback to administration as far as the recommendation goes.
I appreciate the work of the committee and the distinction between capacity and function. And you're absolutely right about increasing the number of teaching spaces, but not acknowledging that also the need for increase in bathrooms and for increase in cafeteria space, let alone opportunities for breakout rooms, for lack of a better term, where you can actually take a group and do your stamp, where you can do your map, your drama and so forth. So I appreciate the work of the committee and I looked at the recommendations and they, and I agree with them. I appreciate the pet, the robust conversations that you've had in order to reach those recommendations. So I'm good with those.
Okay. Back to that.
Uh for the capacity report timeline and moving that to November, the law says though that we have to have it in October, doesn't it?
Policy says that we have to have it in October. I don't know if the law, is it, is it in law?
What, no, what there, what there is a law on is notifying our charter schools of, of certain seats. So we would still, yes, we would be prepared to meet that deadline, that we would be using earlier data. Um so we would still meet that deadline. Uh but there is no, not all districts run a capacity model. There is no law requiring that, that we, we uh submit a capacity report.
We just have to alter the language and the.
Policy.
Policy to ensure that we are, we are in compliance with policy if we move it to November. Um are you done, back to that?
I guess I, I'm gonna be really curious about the portables and when you're gonna create a plan for using them. I guess we'll know more about it when you present it, if you think we need more or we need to move the ones we have. But I, in general, I, I wrote myself a note, like what does that even mean that you, you know, what that plan? Um what your goal really is with it. And I think you addressed it somewhat.
Yeah, I, I think our goal is to maximize uh safety and appropriate educational spaces. So we have some schools that use portables because they've always used portables. Because as Lyman described, they were placed there due to excess number of students. We've lost those students now and we're still using the portable instead of bringing the students back into the building. The other oxymoron is, is we've created new safety entry and exits from elementary schools for millions of dollars that now have, you know, two-inch bulletproof glass to show your driver's license and have space in the building, but we have a portable in the back that does not have that same level of safety afforded to it. So we wanna make sure that if we're using portables, they are the last option instead of the thing that we've just done for several years. We wanna bring people back to a quality of education that we believe that even our oldest buildings can offer in a way for continuity of education, that a portable can feel a little disjointed.
Thank you. Okay. I think that's all for Jenny.
In addition to that and to follow up on that, I'm impressed with the idea that we do have buildings that we are no longer utilizing and they are, uh in my view, a liability to what we want to present as an educational facility. So I'm pleased with the fact that those, they will be evaluated and removed if we can't use them. There's no point in having them there. I don't think um portables add to the aesthetics of a, of a, of a facility. And so if they're utilized and there's a reason for them, but I would like to eliminate those that are not necessary. And maybe we could sell them to somebody else to generate money.
Yeah, I, I'll come to you, back to that.
Um is part of your capacity model reevaluation going to take a look at the flagging? Like how you have schools that are flagged for certain things? And on the one hand, I appreciate that we're looking at school performance. Um and I, I think that is good. We need to take a whole picture. A school maybe has low capacity, but they're killing it with the kids, you know? Like we, we, we can't just have a tunnel vision? I'll just shorten my question. Are you looking at that flag system?
We, we will look at the flagging system, yes.
It's a little interesting to see like a school like Steel has three flags. And that seems like a bad thing, but it's because they are really well utilized. Um so it's just confusing.
Yeah, I think, yeah, just, just to, in summary, and, and, and Mr. Kaiser has alluded to this. A large portion of the capacity model was built with schools like Steel in mind, right? Which is they're running out of space.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, we have the other problem now. And so we're trying to apply a model that was, not completely, but designed for that need. We're trying to apply it to the opposite end of the spectrum.
Yeah.
And it's, it's creating some discontinuity.
Are you done?
Yes, yeah.
Just for clarity, Steel has just one flag, not three.
Yeah, three. Oh, I'm looking at it and I'm sorry.
Go ahead, um Kaiser, Lyman.
Yeah, I was gonna say, there's a dichotomy in the, in the flags, in the sense that. In the sense that there's one flag of, you know, do you have a capacity, I think it's two hundred and seventy-five. And that came out of the period back about ten years ago. And the and the board was really into, we gotta close everything under three hundred because it's not efficient. And there were people like me screaming, boy, there's schools out there that are really good. One of them right now, if you close Queen Palmer, which doesn't give you the three hundred, you would really kill a good school. And I I really appreciate the fact that this board has at least been reasonable on quality, small neighborhood schools. So that's one. The other one, the portable thing has one dichotomy in it, and that is that people Fremont was a really good example. The only place that you could really have a band and music and somewhat free was in the portable. Because anywhere else in the building, you just destroyed three other classrooms when the band started up. So that, there's some reasons for those. But, uh, and we try to account for that too. But that part of it is probably down on the list, particularly, I mean, you have a really good point about the safety issue. And in some cases, we've got our primary care and our our pre-kindergarten in there. And that's that's a worry. But the other thing about portables, see, if you're gonna say, and I've I've screamed on this for years, number one, was if you're gonna say, which we have for years, we're gonna count the portables, we do it without and with, but we don't in our five-year capital plan, plan three million dollars a year routinely for new portables. So if you're gonna say you're gonna use it or on and infinitum, why isn't it in your facilities planning?
Good. Good questions.
Thank you, sir.
Director Jokonsen.
Um, you alluded to it earlier in your introduction, the capacity of our middle schools being significantly low. I grabbed them off of the big report just to look at them, uh, in context. And so a part of your recommendations here, look into that specifically?
I think that, uh, yes, I I I, we have to look at at the capacity model and its implementation. I think we are seeing it struggle more in certain locations, right? I think middle schools is one of those. I think, as I mentioned, our opportunity campuses is another one. And so, um, I think we have to take all of that into account with uh with what we know the district is focused on. And and I think part of this, even in all honesty, even if the capacity model was in sync right now, it's worth a review because the strategy of the district and the focus of the board has shifted, right? And so we're focusing on middle schools right now.
Right.
We're focusing on improving outcomes in middle schools. And likewise, we should then focus this work on how do we understand the capacity of our middle schools um more significantly than, well, that's just our model.
Anything else from the Board at this time? So looking at the recommendations, um, I think firstly, looking at the Board, um, those recommendations are uh supported by the Board that we need to look at a new capacity model that accurately reflects what's happening in our schools. And also consistently from school to school, uh, to what Lyman was saying, if Palmer is setting aside twenty classrooms for um other purposes, but other high schools aren't, then it doesn't reflect the accurate capacity, if I'm reading that right, so, um. So all the recommendations that come in front of it, we are supportive of it, do what it, what is necessary going forward. That is the take of the Board at this time, so that the future reports that come accurately reflect. I mean, this is a bigger conversation to the Board at some point in time if the district enrollment continues to drop. At some point in time, these capacity models are the ones that is going to provide us the data as to what the future direction of the district is going to be in terms of certain buildings. It's, we are not talking about it at this point in time, but we do have to open up that conversation if so. Uh, when I looked at the total, the bigger report, uh, the permits out of our secondary schools stood out to me, uh, some of our high schools and some of our middle schools. Uh, and for various reasons, whatever it is.
And and so we're just in the second year of the K-12 vertical continuum.
Yeah.
And now with Chris really studying that, you know, the hope is that you reduce that loss. When you look at those numbers, um, uh, to Lyman's point, the small school initiative for elementary schools is a very strong strategy. It plays to the strength of what it means to live downtown. We are a collection of different neighborhoods. We have very few manufactured neighborhoods, which is how most of suburbia lives. And so going after the money that you think you could get out of taking the hundred and eighty or two hundred kids at Queen Palmer, that you're gonna save fifty thousand dollars in closing and consolidating, you're gonna lose half of those kids. They're not gonna transition to the other school. And so Chris is taking this different look of what is it that then makes that middle school more attractive? And then from middle school to high school, we had this conversation last week at the at the enrollment. That's where the main loss is. The losses in these matriculation years, which is not as easy as we did put in the new track and field. Right? That's great. It's about the way a community feels about a school over the generation of the time period that they own their your children. So multi-family, multi-children families, once you decide you're not going to the one school, it's harder to get them to get the younger kids to come back. We have a great opportunity now, because again, even if you peel back our, um, uh, performance with distinction schools, I think we're forecasting is now eleven instead of nine, of which I think ten of them are elementary school. Right? We we've got a corner on that market now. We're doing a really good job that seventy percent of our schools are performance rated in the SPF. That's not an equal distribution of seventy percent of elementary, middle and high school. It's mostly elementary schools. So we have to now make this commitment, this guarantee to our community that says we will give you the highest quality middle and high school education. Not be passive in the world of choice. Remember, everybody wants to buy a house across the street from a cute elementary school. And in America, nobody wants to buy a house across the street from the parking lot of a high school, no matter how good it is. So we have to give people the reason to go to our high school. We have great neighborhoods in our city. That's why our elementary schools perform really strongly there. We gotta solve that problem at the secondary level, and Chris is the right guy to really lead that charge.
Yeah, and we, as a Board, we already, uh, when we were talking about the Board priorities, said that that is going to be the focus this year, uh, how do we improve instruction and provide that guarantee at the secondary school level? And when you look at these numbers, the other thing that stood out to me is Homes and Freedom both show strong increase in enrollment and maybe that plays into the GMP program being strategic.
It it does, and we peeled that back a little bit. We're we're in kind of an enrollment conversation again now. Um, other touch points for that, um, they both exceeded what we thought would be the GMP growth this year. So that does say that the community did want a different environment for those GMP programs. But they also grew in non-GMP enrollment. And then, yes, it's very easy to see that in the traditional setting at Freedom because Freedom just as easily in a different boundary could be, you know, belong to a different district if that were, and I'm not asking for that to happen. But I'm just saying like, it just sits in a part of the city that looks a lot like some of our neighboring districts. But Homes is still woefully below its capacity. And when you go to Homes this year compared to last year, it feels like it's bursting with kids. Right? Because we've grown in the spaces that we're not understanding how to prioritize for students. It's hard because we, and so I think the perverse incentive that has happened is attached to Director Nelson's question about flagging. I think that when we gave authority to principals, your goal was to not be flagged. Instead of the goal being, how do I attract more families to maximize the way this building was originally designed to educate children? We've done it before. What is the capacity, physical capacity at Homes?
I would assume it's eight hundred.
Yeah. And we just crossed over six hundred, and we could not be more excited for that. But it literally means that those architects who walked out the door, when they built that seventy years ago, maybe even longer, that's certainly an old building, they said you can get eight hundred kids there. And so, yes, we have a couple of new requirements, but those are, those are single percentage point changes. Like, yes, we have to have these quality neighborhood school things. When we built that school, I don't believe anybody didn't believe in art, music, uh, PE.
Right.
Right, right, of course we did, and those rooms are there.
Based on the architecture, I would say it was during the great era of the seventies.
The great era of the
I guess, of Homes.
Nobody paid attention to how cold it was here in, uh,
Yeah.
November, December, January, February, yes.
It was building.
Thanks, Lyman, for, uh, your feedback and
Sixty years.
Oh, that was close.
Superintendent Call, uh, none of the schools, I mean, all the schools are not at capacity. None of the schools are denying permits as far as you know, right?
The the mandate is, is that no school can deny a permit.
Okay.
Uh, we have centralized enrollment. I am certain if I put that on the front page of the paper, you'll get a couple of dozen families who will show up and say that we might not have been as open to them. Uh, because it's really hard to manage all of that. Uh, I think some of it will come in, if we have twenty-five kids in a classroom, I think a school will think, I don't need another second grader. We need that extra second grader, we'll figure it out. We have the ability in the MLO that as we add children, we will add teachers based upon, we don't even have to come to the Board for that. So we're still working through that. To finish your comment on, uh, Homes and Freedom, the six, uh, executive principals collectively are up over two hundred kids this year in traditional enrollment. And the system is down six hundred. So that says the other fifty, the other forty-four principals are down eight hundred kids. So you made a comment about leadership matters.
Yeah.
I think a lot of what Chris is trying to bring and the reason that Chris reports to Brandon now, because Brandon owns money. We have to make that the thing that makes it motivating for the principal, not, I'm not trying to pay the principal more money, but to be able to bring the programs in that you want, you have to say yes to that twenty-sixth second grade kid. We'll figure it out. That's our obligation to schools. But for six of them to be up two hundred and the rest of the system to be down then collectively eight hundred says that we're not necessarily attaching our principals to be, um, agents of Mr. Kilroy.
Yeah, and starting next year, the student-based budgeting.
Drives that to happen, right?
Okay, thank you. No further comments. Um, thank you for that report. Thank you, Mr. Kilroy, and thank you again, Mr. Kaiser, and all the capacity committee, uh, members who participated in putting this together. Okay, uh, the next agenda.
Thank you. It's great to have you at the table.
The next agenda item is, uh, the Board is going to be uh proactive in looking at the budget for the next academic year, which is, um, twenty-five, twenty-six of the fiscal year, uh, twenty twenty-six budget overview, um. I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Call first and Dr. Conforto also.
Uh, yeah, I won't say much. I'm happy that we're having this conversation early, so the public understands what our priorities are. They aren't different than what they've been for the last several years. The number one way to student achievement is access to high-quality instruction. So I think everything you're gonna see here is about access and about high quality. And so with that, I'm gonna turn it over to, uh, both Brandon and Director Nelson.
Yeah, and I know that Dr. Sharnelson has been working with, that Dr. Conforto, thank you for both of you bringing this together to the Board and also, uh, for the public, uh, to partake in this now, okay.
Yeah, um, again, Board, thank you. Uh, I I I know I can speak for Director Nelson and myself when I say we're we're very grateful and excited to be talking about budget much earlier. Um, because it allows us to have a strategic conversation versus a reactive conversation. We don't anticipate it's gonna be a great budget year in K-12 finance. We don't, right? Any any news story that you're reading about the governor's proposed budget, um, we don't anticipate it's gonna be great. Uh, but we want to build our budget priorities and then adjust as funding is available, instead of build our priorities based off of what funding is available. So I think we're really excited that this conversation is early. Um, just wanted a summary sheet. This is similar to what you saw last year. It's a little combination of both. That academic data has been updated with, um, last year's CMAS data. Uh, remember, we're trying to obviously always connect our budget strategy to our primary focus, which is academic achievement and growth. Um, you'll see the Director Carey's not favorite, um, graph there on the bottom. I will update that for the Board, uh, in the next month or so, as we kind of see the ending of ESR and our different staffing rates. Um, I don't anticipate that's gonna be a dramatic change, but I will update that for the Board, um, after we certify enrollment. You'll see over on the right, remember, we did go through pretty significant reductions last year in order to provide compensation to our system and and support other initiatives. And so it was over a four million dollar reduction, largely that came from central office reductions. That's kind of the the overall piece there. Uh, and then you'll see that kind of mismatch number we we had on the right. Okay. Uh, as we've shared, uh, our, this is our twenty-four, twenty-five proposed budget. Uh, largely, we are a system of compensation. You'll you'll know that. I was looking at surrounding districts. Um, graph, uh, to look at comparisons over the last couple of days. We're very consistent. We're a little higher than most districts around us. Most districts um are around that eighty to eighty-one percent of the overall budget around compensation. Ours is a little higher. Again, remember though, if we go back to this graph, we carry a larger staff staff footprint than most systems are enrollment size. Um, so that makes sense. Um, and then we think about it even more strategically, and we're now thinking about different programs. And so as we've had discussion, remember, an aha moment for me in in this position was that instructional bucket. And looking at that, we were within one percent of the exact same breakdown of how we spend our money in two thousand and six as we were in two thousand and twenty-three, um, even though the system had changed so much in that time. Uh, and so we started to have conversations about how do we grow that bucket? All parts of that graph are important. And the most important is the instructional bucket. That's what's happening in our schools. You'll see other parts of that that pie chart that support schools, um, but that instruction bucket is core of what we do, which is our schoolwork. And so then we think about, well, how do we start to transition, um, that percentage to grow the instructional side, um, instead of the other side? And so you'll see some numbers there on the right. Basically, our budget is just over three hundred and fifty million dollars uh, in terms of our general fund. And so if we wanted to change that percentage by one percentage point, it's gonna cost us about three point five million dollars. Uh, and so then we started to say, well, what if we really wanted to make larger investments? What if instead of increasing by half of a percent or even a percent, we made a commitment to get to a three percent increase? And so for us, that would be a ten to twelve million dollar budget change. This is just functionally, thank you for the correction, Director, this is functionally the buckets that live within those different categories. Um, and so again, you'll see instruction, classroom programs and athletics. That's the core of what we do. There are things in instructional support services, school administration, pupil services that absolutely support the work that is happening in our schools, and the core of what we do is in that instructional bucket. This is not a D-eleven coded bucket, this is state required. So we don't code it any differently than D-twenty or D-forty-nine. They have to, they have to group things exactly the same way. So we can try to get an apples-to-apples comparison when we're thinking about how we're resourcing our schools, um, in relation to other school districts. Okay, it's really as simple as we have three options. Where do we allocate any new money we have? Where do we transition existing money? And where do we focus our budget reductions? And so if we have to make any. And so last year, as as the Board directed, um, through the superintendent, we focused new money as close as possible to classrooms. We focused on compensation. Um, and we took budget reductions largely outside of schools and in our central office. Those continue to be our three strategies. And so if it's a banner year from the state and our enrollment looks good, we got lots of new money, we get to focus a lot of that new money. But even when our enrollment is down and even when the state isn't gonna have a great year, we still have strategic opportunity on what we do with our resource. And it just falls into where do we move existing money and where do we take reductions if we need to? So, we had a conversation with the Board. Remember, we always think our budget in two buckets. Recurring every single year money and that one-time non-recurring money. And so that original conversation with the Board, we presented a couple of options. Do we wanna focus on compensation as our recurring budget? We have no idea, let me be clear. We have no idea what our recurring resources will be next year. I have no projection from the state. I don't think it's gonna be good. But it doesn't mean I know a dollar number. But what we are committing to is that recurring money is going towards compensation. The other option we presented are strategic initiatives. The Board said we want that to be focused on compensation. With as much money or as little money as we get, new recurring money, we are focusing on compensation. And so then what that leads us to is, what do we wanna focus our non-recurring resources on? Remember, we spent a lot of that last year. Remember, we spent a lot of that last year in, in non-recurring compensation. Um we've accrued more, we have a good pot of money of non-recurring resources. We will bring parts of that non-recurring resource allocation to you in mid-year allocations. I tell, I'm telling you right now, you will see a very, very focused mid-year budget. Uh it's not going to be, hey, we have a bucket of money, how do we wanna spend it as a system? It is very strategic and very focused. It will get even more focused and strategic after it goes through the DAC Budget Subcommittee um in two weeks. So, we wanted to bring a discussion to the board on where do we focus non-recurring funding? We came up with some possible ideas or concepts based on what we've heard from the board and what we know are strategies of the board, but that key thing there at the bottom is other ideas. Um and so I think Director Nelson and I wanted to open this up to conversation, but just to um kind of give a little key detail of each, obviously compensation. This district has historically provided non-recurring compensation as part of its compensation package. We assume that will continue to be a strategy of the board, um that's up there for uh your consideration. Peak experiences. Things like uh our CTE programming, things like all of the field trips that we hear about all of the time, things like um study abroad, all of those peak experiences that we are trying to build and systematize across the system, we have the opportunity to focus non-recurring resources on them, because they're not people-based, they're not FTE. Supplementing student-based budgeting, we are transitioning to student-based budgeting, and what I can tell you is in that original year, we're not gonna get it perfect. And so a potential is to have a bucket of money for if we find ourselves in some sticky situations, to be able to say, hey, we can cover this gap for another year as we get tighter and cleaner in student-based budget. Um extended learning opportunities, so those are, if we think about dyslexia supports, uh after-school tutoring, summer bridge opportunities, um all of those extended learning, I'm just naming a few. And then as a district that is always looking to recapitalize, we obviously always wanna consider capital improvements uh as a part of our resource allocation, and then again, any other ideas that the board may have? Nelson, I'll turn it over to you if you have any.
Um just if you could help give us a sense of what, in your mind, the priorities would be of this list? Uh we can't do all of them, there's not enough money. So just kind of helping us know where the board, putting a stake in the ground, this is what we see is really valuable and important for this year. And uh just a reminder, this non-recurring pot of money comes from vacancies that, positions that we budgeted for um salaries, benefits, that we still have vacancies, and so that's where this money is coming from.
And non-spend money from the previous year. But largely vacancies.
Yeah. I think, I'll just turn it over to.
Are we done with the presentation, are there any more slides?
Uh, uh, the last slide is just next steps after we kind of hear the, the board's thoughts. Um but yeah, we just wanted to open it up to see uh what was compelling or if there were other ideas as we start to prioritize our resources.
Thank you for bringing this to the board's attention, and it's always good to strategize uh proactively and figure out, even though we don't know exactly what part of money we are going to get from the School Finance Act from the state, it's good to start talking about it, and the board has clearly indicated over and over again, we want to invest our limited resources as close to students as possible in the classrooms. We did that last year by preserving teaching positions throughout the district while taking cuts at the central admin position. And that will be the renewed focus of the board when we, next week, talk about the board priorities and we have a new um um new big banner up there, that's going to be improving student outcomes, that means that we need to take care of our teaching staff and make sure that uh the cuts, when it happens, if it happens, is as far away from the students as possible. But I'll open it up for the board, um uh for feedback, uh Director Carey.
I have a few things, um number one, Dr. Comfort, just cause I know this is occasionally a sticking point with the community, I just wanna refresh my memory as to the logic here. One of the complaints that we have heard at times is, when we do non-recurring compensation, that it's, it's more of a bonus than it is a true raise, so I just, I just wanna refresh my memory for how this works. Part of the reality of being in declining enrollment averaging, is that when the state gives us money, because our enrollment over the last chunk of years being averaged is shifting, we do not get to reap the full benefit of that money, is that correct?
That's correct.
And so as a result, it puts us financially in kind of a scary place to do recurring compensation, because in reality, the money that we're getting from the state is shrinking. Even if it might look like the state is giving more money because of the enrollment delta, we end off occasionally worse, is that accurate?
That, that's accurate, and, and our, a- as we've talked about, enrollment is the number one driver of, of our budget, and I would use last year as an example, the state provided six and a half percent. That's a decent percent from the state. Out of that, because of our enrollment challenges, we only got just over two million dollars of, of new revenue. Obviously, the board provided much more than two million dollars in recurring compensation, not to mention the non-recurring compensation. But yes, even if the state comes with big numbers, if our enrollment is, is dropping, we don't see, we didn't see six point five percent of new money uh last year, we saw a, a much smaller portion.
Yeah, so I just wanna say loud and clear for the community, the board understands the difference between what you might call a bonus, the non-recurring compensation piece, and what might, what you might call a true raise, recurring compensation, we do understand the difference. The reality of declining enrollment averaging puts us in a hard place sometimes. Um second point, could you go back to the very first slide? I promise I'm not talking about the graph, I'm talking about something else. Um. I think I really wanna frame the discussion that we're about to have here in the graphic that you see on the top left. Um CMAS scores up eyeballing it about two percent in ELA in math, that's good, that's a good trajectory. But we are still looking at a system where, you know, if I can do the math right in my own head, seventy percent of our kids are not passing the CMAS in math, right? So, how big is our total budget, Dr. Comfort?
Uh including MLO, we're over four hundred million dollars.
Yeah, so we, I, I would just really encourage the board to think big here, to go for broke on transformational changes, cause we can't be a district that's wielding a budget of four hundred million dollars and seventy percent of our kids are still not passing math, like that's just not okay. Um so, can you go back now to slide number eight? So if we're talking about what to do with non-recurring money, let me just throw out a suggestion, I've completed my first round of um going to schools, mostly with an eye of talking to principals. Every single one said what could make a difference for them is having more teaching staff. And in, where I teach at the Academy Prep School, I've, I think I've said this before, um anecdotally on camera, we have a new second lieutenant that we grabbed in our science department, and we'll lose him the moment he goes to pilot training, so we don't get to keep him forever. So could we use some of this non-recurring money to say, okay, where are the specific places, whether that's, you know, middle school, or whether that's Mitchell, or where are the specific places where we're seeing low achievement, and can we go for broke in throwing some extra teaching, teaching staff in that direction? It's non-recurring, so I, we wouldn't necessarily get to, you know, keep them, but could we, you know, try to move the needle in that way?
We absolutely could, I, 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 I just wanna say, I think that's what our, our thought was, and that supplant, supplanting, it's not supplanting. Supplementing student-based budgeting, which is at a school like Mitchell, where they have declining resource, instead of them having to reduce their teacher force for a year, or reduce whatever they wanna do, can we kick money in to say, actually, we're gonna keep you whole, or we're gonna go over the, we're gonna go over that um in a year, and so I think that was our thought, we can, we can name it in a variety of ways though.
Yeah, and it, and it's a combination of how we budget, but then actually the reality of hiring. Two years ago, we added sixteen CLDE teachers as we saw that, one, we weren't at the state-recommended best practice, and two, we had a growing multi-language learner uh student and family population. Those are where most of our vacancies still are, so yes, we budgeted, but what we're really finding is, is we have to invest in our own and grow our own to solve most of our problems. And so we saw great response in the dyslexia campaign uh and efforts that the board asked us to get to. Many teachers taking those courses to get those early certifications. Still probably a year or a year and a half out until they get to a full Calp certification, but what we're finding is, is matching the budget to the reality of what actually happens in the school is then when the strategy comes to a head, that we can say, we should be over-staffing schools that are underperforming. Cause we know that what we need is access to that high-quality instruction. But then holding ourselves accountable to, were we able to actually get that staff?
Yeah.
Cause that's, that's been the gap right now. This year, we are highest staff yet in our three uh priority improvement schools, but Adams, Gallo, and Mitchell. But still yet, none of them, I believe, are at a hundred percent. And so getting them to the hundred and ten percent is definitely the goal.
Yes, I, I think bottom line for me, and then I'll shut up here, is um whatever we can spend, that's going to actually move the needle for achievement in the classroom, is what I would prefer to do, and that may mean more teachers at, you know, some of our most-at-need schools. It may mean supplementing our own, you know, kind of professional development, getting more resources to train our students. I heard in a conversation I had with CSEA that, for instance, like, you know, more training on like behavioral type stuff, classroom management is useful. You're the operational people, so you'll have a much better sense than I will for where specifically we can move the needle on outcomes, but my feeling is that, that's where we gotta go for broke. And I'd love to see, you know, you and the team come back with some really ambitious ideas.
Thanks for that feedback, and if we can resource more teachers to schools that are struggling, that's always um a good thing to happen, the only caveat that I would, what you talked about is, ultimate goal is to move the needle. So we got to hold ourselves and the school and uh administration to make sure that in the end, that's what happens, if we resource all these teachers and we still are not able to move the needle, then we have a different conversation, like uh what, going back to, you know, this year, there are some schools that, as an example, third grade may have only forty-eight students in their class, and that would require only, according to the board formula, two teachers for that, but we have in some schools, three teachers, which is great. That means smaller number of class size with less students in each class, but then we hold the school and administration to make sure, and the area superintendents, that those students are being lifted up and the gaps are being filled, because you have lesser number of uh students in each class, that's ultimately, it's improving student outcomes.
Yeah, and I think, you know, wh- when you're, when you're trying to improve an institution, right, you want a feedback loop of, we try a new idea, we assess whether or not it works, and then we reassess, I, I think, my, my worry is that the limiting step there is trying new ideas. So I, I would, you know, again, going back to the very, the figure I called out, seventy percent of our kids are not passing the CMAS in math, I'd love to see some new ideas, I, I don't wanna just be improved, you know, finding improvements on the margins.
Yeah. Anything else as far as feedback goes, Dr. Goll?
Thanks, um my concerns are, are around what are we not going to fund if we don't use whatever non-recurring funds we have? And that is, are there capital improvement projects that really need to be addressed? Do we have funding sufficient to address them now? Or if we don't use some of this funding for them, will we have buildings falling down or breakage? Uh for extended learning opportunities, if we don't have, will we not have summer school or summer bridge if we don't use this funding? So would this be in addition to what's currently for um summer bridge, or would not using it here make it go away? And I guess the same might be said for peak experiences or field trips, so.
Yeah, I'm not really sure I, I understand the question, non-recurring dollars are always looked at annually. What we wanna do is we wanna make sure that we're strong and recurring in the places where we know it attaches to, the number one way to student achievement is access to high-quality instruction. That means compensation, how do we get to a place where we're not still talking about decreasing enrollment averaging? That we're actually paying people based upon the dollars that come from, from the uh, from the SFA? But to Director Carey's point, in order to break the incremental changes, how do we get significant that says, if you come to District Eleven, you will get a peak experience in every year that you are in District Eleven? Now that's gonna have to cost us some money, most of that money will start in a non-recurring space. This year again, we have a mid-year budget request for our study abroad. I communicated to Dr. Comfort and to the academics team, next year's budget has to have study abroad built into that, cause it's proven to be of great value and attracts a lot of our students to stay in those secondary experiences. So I would just say probably the easiest way to think about this is, this is a little bit of R and D. How do we take things where we can pivot very quickly and determine if it did work or it didn't work, and then move it in? We were having a conversation earlier today, that we still don't have a recurring line for budget review and renewal. I mean for uh curriculum re- review and renewal. We are a teaching and learned institution that doesn't protect money within its recurring budget, that says every five years, we need to be looking at, let's just call it the four things of science, humanities, ELA, and math. We should have a sine and cosine wave that says every year, on a four or five-year cycle, we should have a million to two million dollars programmed in that says, do we need to upgrade the quality of our curriculum? Right now, we're dependent upon the inefficiencies of the system in order to keep ourselves in business. That cannot happen. And so will there be trade-offs? Absolutely, there's gonna have to be trade-offs. Are those trade-offs gonna be distal from instruction? No, period, dot. That is the focus of this school district, is all the money is close to the student to ensure that we can bring the highest quality instruction to bear. Will some people agree with all those strategies? Maybe not, maybe some people don't think a peak experience is a good idea, we're gonna try it out, we're gonna put feedback on it, we're gonna see what happens, we're gonna make sure there are educational opportunities, they're not just a field trip every year, that's not what we're trying to do. So the goal is to use non-recurring dollars in this kind of R and D space to get to the, we need a couple of big ideas on the table. I love the fact that we got two percent growth, and if Kalaki were in here, he's not in here, he would tell you that at a district level, that is statistically significant. We had a twenty percent growth in our district performance scoring, which was the second highest in the state for an urban system. We're moving actually very quickly, but it's horrible to look at a slide that says seventy percent of our kids are still not just passing CMAS. So I think right now, the ask is, how do we get the district maybe to say, we're gonna go from sixty percent of our spend, which is on instruction, to seventy percent of our spend on instruction over three or four years? That will require the board to make some hard choices, absolutely. But if we think that we're gonna get there, going from sixty to fifty-nine point eight to sixty point two, and maybe we liked a free peak experience, cause we found a partner, we're never gonna get, remember, the golden line is fifty percent. You get fifty percent of your kids to grade level on CMAS, and then the whole world opens up. Because now the teacher is not overwhelmed by all the backfilling that has to happen on standards. Now it's much easier to get those other kids, there's an accelerant that comes there, so we, we are not at budget build right now. We are not projecting what we're, uh what we think any of those offsets would have to be, but to the community, the focus is on instruction, the focus is on the classroom, the focus is on those professionals who sit in those spaces every day, that have gotten us those results. That have gotten us how hard it is to get two percent. This is the second year in a row that District Eleven grew in both math and ELA, and I'm pretty sure we're the only district that grew in math and ELA two years in a row, and yet, only two percent. So do the math, to get to fifty, when you're at thirty, that's ten more years, right? That's every kid in school now getting to a place where they ended up graduating. It takes a generation to change the vector of where a, a failed school system has been. We have a plan for it, we'll use the non-recurring dollars to do this bit of R and D to understand what'll work, to not have to make those kinda Sophie's Choice um uh decisions where we don't have to.
Dr. Tuchan.
So to, to Superintendent Goll's point and Director Thomas's point, if, if we are focusing on academics, would that be in the other ideas part here, or would it be? You know, where, where could it fall into?
It could be, or it could be extended learning opportunities.
That's what I was thinking.
I think it depends what specifically you're thinking of.
Okay, I mean, it could be teacher staff, or support staff, or tutor staff, you know, extending the learning opportunities both during the day and after school, or before school, or whatever, so. Yeah, I'm, I'm aligning with what Director Thomas mentioned, I think we, you know, we talk about that, and we go, man, this stinks, and it's getting better, but it stinks, how do we really try to address it, so?
Can I just revisit my, my question, my comment? So going back, capital improvement projects, I wanna make sure that we are, uh especially, I wanna make sure that we're not neglecting and deferring further maintenance that may be extreme, so.
I think, yes, that was the first part of your question, capital dollars can't move somewhere else, so capital dollars are locked into capital improvement.
Yeah, no, this is, all of these things, right, there, there's a. There, there's a budget plan for all of these things. And then this is about where do we invest more?
Non-recurring competition.
Right.
Yeah, because it's non-recurring. And so do we have, do we have a capital improvement plan?
I sure hope so.
We absolutely do.
Because we've had one before.
Every year from the MLO part, we have PIPs that go directly to capital. This, this is what we are talking about, this extra non-recurring money.
I understand.
Yeah.
But we are also taking some of that capital improvement funding out of, um, the MLO dollars for capital projects and putting it toward our COP.
COPs, yeah.
Right. So my concern is that we will have needs that will not get addressed. So that is what I was trying to get reassurance on. I'm just gonna leave it there because I'm not getting it. The, um, other focus I would mention though is peak experiences. We talked about investing, um, or engaging our families and our students and also addressing enrollment. Yes, part of that is gonna be successful academics, but some of it also might be the peak experience side. And so I would also be interested in seeing some of that funding go there to engage the students so that they will continue indeed in things like their language studies or maybe science studies. But if they're engaged, I suspect they're going to be better students. And so I think there's a draw there as well. Thank you.
Yeah, as far as the facilities, um, um, Dr. Comfort can talk a little bit more. When I engage with the community, the overwhelming sentiment is that we are improving our facilities in terms of the secure entrances, the renovations that are happening to our buildings, the bathrooms at model schools, the paintings, the exterior, interior, uh, the field, athletic field that has been added to future centers. So there is a lot of good work that is going on in that area. And I'm sure you are keeping track of other necessary things that need to be taken care of and that's not being neglected.
Yes, we have a really comprehensive plan to address our facilities. Obviously, um, I'm gonna need a little more than what's in our non-recurring budget if we really wanna go and recapitalize the district. That's a bigger conversation we've had. There's not going to be anything that's neglected. It's anytime you have large groups of, or a large amount of money, it's always a, a potential conversation, um, which is can it be focused there? Uh, I think we're hearing loud and clear that, that the focus is on academics, which falls into a number of those buckets. But yes, we will continue to have a very aggressive, uh, capital plan with the, with the funding that we have. Um, and I appreciate you acknowledging what has happened over the last 18 months and the, and before that. And the response from schools, uh, about the work that has been done, that will continue.
Yeah. Thank you.
Just very quickly, as somebody who has spent time in these schools for a number of years, I hope that air conditioning is being seriously considered for whatever school doesn't have it. Because if kids, I'm telling you, we would sit in a classroom, just sit, and sweat would be pouring down us. And they cannot learn. And people cannot teach when your rooms are 85 degrees and hotter. So that, that's a real problem, especially for classrooms that have no windows. We need better, I don't wanna say ventilation, but certainly they, they deserve air conditioning.
Yep, and we will bring as part of the COP, I know we talked about Palmer, remember? There's, uh, 25 million dollars not focused on the Palmer project in the COP. And a large portion of that is gonna go towards, uh, air conditioning projects, depending on size and scale. Just for clarity though, even regardless of the capital budget I have, I, we would need to save multiple years of that budget and do no projects anywhere if we wanted to really finish the air conditioning, um, plan for the remainder of our district just because those high schools are so expensive. That's why recapitalization is, is such an important strategy. But we will be bringing to the board, uh, in the very near future, the non-Palmer COP projects. And you will see air conditioning being the prominent focus of that remaining money.
Thank you.
You have a question?
I was just gonna, I, I thought we were finished. So if anybody else has anything, then I'll just chime in. One thought on extended learning opportunities being maybe geared towards the FRL demographic because that's where we see the biggest gaps in learning and achievement. So, um, that would be just my pitch to the team. And, um, now that we've kind of heard, had this conversation, Dr. Comfort and I will kind of take some time to come up with more specific ideas to bring back to you. And, um, I think I wanna just footstomp that when it comes to recurring compensation, the board has decided that, or re- recurring, uh, funding, the board has decided that compensation is the priority, which is a challenge in a business where you are not having as much sales or revenue coming in. You don't often hear of staff getting big raises. And so we're going to try and battle that and do our best to still give staff meaningful compensation packages, even though the, the declining enrollment is a very serious reality that we have within this district. And, um, just by having this conversation now in October, I really wanted to have us take a look at our budget development months ahead of what we normally do so that we would have time to be creative, come up with new ideas and have the team be able to really look at our current budget because there isn't gonna be a lot of new money coming in and figuring out how can we reallocate dollars and, um, just giving us the time to be thoughtful and strategic. And so, um, thanks for you guys to having this conversation way earlier than we normally do. And I'm, I'm excited that we're doing it. And I hope that we can see something meaningful come out of this. So, um, Dr. Comfort, if you wanna.
Yeah, we'll just wrap, uh, just so the board knows. We'll take the feedback we heard today. We'll bring it to DAC Budget Subcommittee in a couple of weeks. We'll get their feedback. Uh, and we will bring that back to the, the board with some potential plans, costs, um, strategies, uh, well ahead of, of our budget development process. So then we're, we're positioned really well when we, when the SFA hits, we know what we're focusing our money on. Um, and so that's our, that's our commitment to you.
Okay. Thank you. We look forward to what you bring back to us. And, uh, you heard the feedback on the board, the commitment is to student outcomes, instruction, classrooms. And with that focus in place, our limited resources are going to primarily go, which is what we have done the last two or three years, possible compensation for our teaching staff. So, thanks. We look forward to this conversation going forward. I think we are pretty much at the end of the work session. So if there are no other, um, feedback from the board, we will adjourn at 6:20 PM. If we can quickly go to the board, yes, we can start the special meeting and then we'll drink before we go into the.